All right, I'd like to call the Village of Cottage Grove Village Board of Trustees to order. It is Monday, March 7th at 6:30 PM. We are holding this meeting as a hybrid, which means it was both on Zoom, there's an audio call-in number, as well as here in the Village Hall. And with that, I will, and the link's at the top of the agenda for both of those items. I'd like to call us to order. We do have a quorum. The agenda was properly posted, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice.
Next up, item four, public appearances, public's opportunity to speak on any subject. If you do, would like to speak, just ask that you hold your comments to no more than three minutes, share your name, your address, and your municipality, so we can capture that for the public record. So with that, anybody from the public who would like to speak? All right, then, we'll move on to, and if I was discussing, consider our meeting minutes from our Village Board meeting held on February 21st. Any questions, comments, edits regarding the meeting minutes?
A motion to approve the February 21st minutes as they were presented.
Thank you, Paul. Is there a second? Thank you, Troy. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody opposed? Anybody abstained? Motion carries. If the board's okay, I'd like to take and move the schedule around due to our guests tonight. This would be the Joint Fire Committee report, and so cover those items. So with that, David, Melissa, or Paul. Again, if nobody has any issues with that.
David or Paul?
We need the blade left. I'm keeping you guys on top of that here.
Do you want me to just?
Your normal, your normal.
Yep. So we met, um, we met, 20th, 23rd. We met, uh, it was a chief report in the packet, 36 members, eight officers, one D O, 22 firefighters, four probationaries, and have attended 36 calls for service. It's in the minutes we can read now. Update on the consolidated fire agreement. We'll discuss the PAA recommendations at the next meeting. The fire department did a membership survey around fire department classifications, and we had a quick conversation around the Attorney General opinion. The chief and the assistant chief walked through the survey completed by the membership. We discussed and considered the use of ARPA funds for the radio replacements, which we'll talk about here in a little bit. And then we'll also talk about discussing, consider the squad one replacement. Just to finish up what we covered in that meeting, then we talked about using the Pleasant Springs funds to purchase the first year of First Due Fire recording software. Firehouse has been, there's a, there's an application called Firehouse that's been using for scheduling and tracking. Firehouse was acquired by a company and the cost, annual cost has gone up considerably. So they looked for a replacement called First Due. And so we're going to be replacing Firehouse with First Due. We already used the Pleasant Springs funds to purchase the first year. Then we had a couple of updates, one on the East Island in the parking lot. There was about one estimate for that. We're waiting on another one from Houston. So no more, no more at the next meeting. And then we had an update on the Bottom Floor Station. The department has tried to do it via a grant in the past. It was a current price, probably just under $21,000. We're talking, we're, we're, with that, we have two discuss and consider options on the agenda tonight. The first one is...
The radio replacement? ARPA funds?
The ARPA funds for the radio. There should be a memo in your package. Chief, do you want to make any statements about the memo?
No, I don't. Chief, you might want to go to the mic, so that those on the phone, or the video can follow.
All right. So as they said, we attached a memo for that. Just to kind of elaborate what we have for the situation on radios right now, our radios were replaced in early 2008, 2009, somewhere in there. They're currently obsolete. The, they don't support them anymore. As they've been failing, they're, they can't be repaired. So we've been writing the AFT grant for the last three years, trying to get a grant to pay for it. We currently have a grant out there to pay for it. Uh, we already haven't, let me rephrase that. We have the AFT grant that we applied for. It opened in January. We applied for it again. So basically, we're seeking that if the AFT grant isn't successful this time around, if we could use ARPA funds to pay for the radios. When the radios were purchased back in 2008, 2009, we only purchased enough radios for one radio per team. So what happens is, we operate in teams of two, if the person separated. The person who doesn't have a radio has no way to communicate with the outside, call for help, any of that stuff. So we'd be looking to purchase all new radios and purchase a radio for every seating assignment so that everybody on the fire ground has a way to communicate. We broke down the different trucks and the cost of all the portables and the mobiles, and then we separated out the cost for the towns portion for their two town-owned trucks. So what, what I guess we're looking for is permission to earmark ARPA funds. If the AFT grant is successful, then we would say, we would use the AFT grants to buy the radio. But if it's unsuccessful, then we'd be asking to use AFT grants, or A, ARPA funds, sorry, ARPA funds to purchase the radios this year.
Chief, can you remind everybody the timelines on the grant?
So that they're supposed to start awarding the grants in May. The estimate is that most of the awards will be delivered by the end of July, August sometime. Sometimes with it being a federal program, it goes longer. So we're hoping to have a for-sure answer by the end of July, August, or March.
Thank you, Chief. One thing I will add, there was a lot of conversation during the meeting about, because we've tried for the grant twice, what's the possibility that we'll get it a third time? And there was some, some conversation around, we have the ARPA funds, let's just buy the radios. The more that Assistant Chief Hammond kind of looked into the issue, she was like, if, if we do that, then we kind of hang Deer Grove EMS and Deerfield Fire out to dry, because then, if we get the grant, it's kind of a chicken or the egg. If we step out of the grant, they don't get the grant. If we buy the radios now and then win the grant, we have to give the money back, right? So again, this is kind of a vicious side letter. So kind of the recommendation out of, out of the committee was to at least approve purchase via the ARPA funds, but wait to hear from the AFT grant. If we don't get the grant, then buy via the ARPA funds. Does it make sense?
Does that hinder our chances to get the grant, though? If we say at the outset, we're just gonna, I'm just asking, you kind of definitely have a good...
Does it hurt our chances for the grant if we?
Right. In other words, not saying that the folks running the grant, at the federal level, are gonna look into the Zoom meeting or minutes or whatever and figure that out, but I mean...
It's worth a question.
It, it shouldn't, we don't have to report to the AFT that we have, that this came up, I guess. We don't have to tell them that we do have another option. So it shouldn't affect that.
Okay.
It's part of the grant process, you're saying. They're not asking the question, are you seeking other funds?
Correct. Because we've already applied for the, the grant's already applied for.
It's already been applied for, and there's no mention of the, the ARPA funds in that, in terms of that grant writing process.
Yep.
So Chief, my question is then, between now and knowing that and getting, you know, whatever route ends up, we get the grant, that's great. If we get, we use ARPA funds, you know, that's fine. Where are we at a risk for fire personnel right now with radios continuing to break? And you, you already said that we can't replace them.
So what we did is, at the end of last year with extra money in the budget, I think we talked about it in the last Village Board meeting of the year, I used any surplus funds we had to buy extra radios. So we do have a handful of brand-new ones that are spares. When the new engine comes, which is supposed to be in a few weeks, we ordered two new mobile radios for that truck. Those are gonna be installed while it's being built. So we will have a few extras on hand for, in case something happens. So we're not short right now. We do have a few spares.
Okay, all right.
Because that was my concern in the committee, is that the potential risk of any of you or your team members stepping into a fire, you know, without a radio. To me, that's unacceptable. And is that still a remote possibility? We don't move forward, but be sooner than later?
I mean, if we have a fire between now and then, there is a possibility that we're gonna be operating, we will be operating in some of the trucks with a, one radio per team. We just don't have, we do have enough for every truck to do one radio per team right now. The latter is the one exception that has a radio for every seat in it. So if situations started getting bad, we could take one of the extras out of the latter as well and move that over to another truck. So...
And again, as I speak to that, my concern is for you and your team members.
Correct. Appreciate that.
And I guess that, with that said, and, you know, just keep us apprised, if, if, you know, two, two radios die out, three more, four, or whatever, then we'll have to figure out how to, you know, replace those in the interim before we hear from the grant or approach it from...
And Chief, last we talked, did you ask the, the radio supplier for longer terms? Were they willing to do longer terms?
I asked him if it would be possible for us to order the radios now and defer payment till December of this year, so that we would be guaranteed to know the results of the grant or the ARPA funds. And he said we could do that, but we would have to put a purchase order on file, and that would technically then violate the terms of the AFT grant. Because you can't commit to buy them, and you can't purchase anything before the, the grant is awarded. Otherwise, they'll void your award.
Forgot about that part. One little detail.
Are all the radios in stock? Like, as soon as you put in the order, are they available, or is there like a long lead time?
No, there's, right now, we ordered them today. He said he thought we would have them by July. So it's, it's a few months lead time on them right now anyways.
So if we were to use ARPA funds for this, but per the grant requirements, you can't have money set aside or directed towards radios, would it be better for us to just kind of earmark that we want to use ARPA funds for the radios, rather than actually say that we are going to do that?
I, I think that would be an option. It's entirely up to you guys how you want to ultimately approve it. If earmarking it works easier for you guys, that's fine with us. I think that, I think what we talked about in the Joint Fire Committee was to try and get a path forward either way, so that we didn't have to bring it up for another meeting. Like, you know, we find out in July that we didn't get the AFT grants, we don't have to come back and ask the boards again to vote on using ARPA funds. I guess it's already set aside. But if we did get the grant, then we would just release the ARPA funds and spend it on something else.
Do we expect to do anything with our ARPA funds before July or August? I mean, I know we kind of discussed it previously, but we haven't really revisited it.
I mean, all the projects that were discussed were longer term, I think, so...
Yeah, I, I don't foresee anything between now and, you know, the, probably the next time it would be discussed at length would be during the financial management plan process. So kind of, or, or maybe during the prioritization this spring, probably the earliest. So...
I'll, I'll just note that I want to thank you, Chief Archibald, for the increased communication that you've had between yourself and your department and the village. Like, I really appreciate the memos in the packets, in the monthly updates, and the increased information that we're getting at the Fire Committee as well. I think it's been really helpful to understand more, more of the fire department needs too. So thank you for that. And I am in full support of using the ARPA funding for the purchase of the radios. And I, I think it's important for your department to have equipment that keeps you safe and our community safe.
Thank you.
Well, I, I don't, like, I don't want to mess up the grant requirements either, but I don't know.
Rick, if we, can you make a motion to earmark funds, or is that?
Kind of the same.
Is that kind of the same thing?
You could do, I mean, it's first lien here, but what you're essentially doing is a contingency motion. So it's like, this only becomes a penalty if this is issued. So, to that condition, it's not a penalty.
So I'll make a motion to approve the use of ARPA funds for the village's portion of the radios to be purchased if the grant from AFG is denied.
Second.
All right, thanks Melissa, thanks David. Any further discussion then? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Anybody abstained? Motion carries. All right, second item then, David?
Yep. Second memo, I don't know if it made it into the packet or not, but Squad One is up for replacement. Chief, did I get that date right? Is it 2023 Squad is up for?
Yeah, it's supposed to be delivered in 2023.
Okay. So Squad One is slated for replacement in 2023. Current lead times for fire apparatus is 19 to 20 months, and only getting longer. So the, the committee recommended placing an order for a truck now due to the lead times. Two quotes were procured by the department. In the memo, I did include the, the company and the base price. The fire, the fire department recommended the Reliant fire apparatus, and that is the one that the committee chose, was from Reliant fire apparatus. So we'll need to talk about that. And then the second part is the prepayment. There are three prepayment options. Each option provides a certain level of cost savings. The, the members from the Town of Cottage Grove did show an interest in a hundred percent prepayment with the contract. That would equal to twenty, a little over $27,000 in savings. With that, Chief, anything you want to add?
Just, I guess, just trying to stress, unfortunately, we're in a really rough time for fire trucks. We had them run the price on the new engine that's gonna be delivered in a few weeks, that current truck. Currently, that truck would be $110,000 more dollars than what you paid for it. The one that the town ordered in August, that one would've went up $60,000 just on the chassis. So that's not even the full truck, that's just the commercial part of it. So prices are going up. They already told us that there's gonna be another price increase in May, and they're thinking five to seven percent on another increase. So it's, I guess we're hoping to try and beat some of these increases, so we don't have to pay more for the same truck. That's what we're looking at.
So with the prepayment option, then, it saves money, but is our price locked in if we don't prepay?
Whether you prepay or not, you're locked in from the time you sign the contract. So if you prepay, you get the discount upfront, but if you don't, you just, you're still guaranteed to have that price. They're gonna carry it until the 21 months, and it'll still be good when the truck's delivered.
My only concern with this is we didn't budget for this, did we? Or did we budget for it?
Next year. And it was $500,000.
Yes, correct. We were, we were basing our portion on a $500,000 truck. So do any of these prepays, how does that, how does that impact us for, for this year?
I guess, what do you mean?
What?
I think the better question is, how do you define prepaid? It says here in the memo, prepaid due April of 2023.
There's two different options. There's one that you prepaid in 2023 when they start doing the work on the chassis, and there's a prepaid now when you sign the contract, which would be like, I'm assuming once you sign the contract, they'll give you an invoice that's like a net 60 days for the full price of the truck.
And I, I took some liberties from the, from the actual quote. I think the quote might be in the packet. But option one is a hundred percent prepayment due by April 2023. Option two is just make a progress payment. It's like, I didn't see it in the quote, but there's probably some, it doesn't have to be that big. And then number three is the one that, that the Town of Cottage Grove had kind of alluded or indicated that they'd like to do, which I, I assumed based on the quote that pay upfront, pay now kind of thing for option three. In the committee, the village members kind of thought option one probably made the most sense for us. But again, that's, that was kind of knee-jerk just in the moment. In the committee, we thought that would probably make the most sense, but we wanted to bring it back to the whole board and have a conversation.
Well, that fits better with the budget planning.
I would just say if there was anything this year, we would want to have a further discussion with Ellers. As it is, it, it sounds like, just with the increased costs, and in particular with fire truck apparatus, I, I don't think the plan will be to pay for these in cash moving forward. Starting, starting in next year, we'd probably look to have this be part of a, 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 part of a village borrowing, because fire trucks can be part of bonds. So we, we'll get a, we can get a good interest rate. So certainly that option one would work out well and still get a decent amount of, of savings. There was some conversation around, and I don't know how serious the conversation, but there was a conversation around potentially the town paying for it entirely, entirely, and then billing us for our portion of it. So if, so if we couldn't do option three, they would do option three in total and then send us a bill for our portion of it. Again, we didn't, we didn't vote on it, we didn't talk about it, but that, that was a...
It was just kind of thrown out there, yeah.
They'd send us a bill in '23? Something that was up for debate, up for negotiation, I'll put it that way.
I want to think I would add.
No, I just took it that way, you know, because we looked at option one as the more desirable, meaning that it wasn't budgeted that.
We made a very...
The invoice that, you know, we don't have a budget for '22, so the invoice.
You know, Chief, if I can say, I appreciate the fact that you're bringing this to the forefront and trying to find a way to save the fire district money. I, I guess I'm a bit confused as to why this was going to be a discussion item at budget time.
So normally, we would, the, the plan would be for a 2023 truck, it would be brought up and approved when we submit our budget in 2022. But when we brought this up in the January meeting of the Joint Fire Committee, and we told them the long lead times and how the prices were going up, the Joint Fire Committee agreed that we should look at purchasing it immediately, because you guys are, in the past, you did cash on delivery on the other trucks that we did. So, so the, the thought was if we got the order in, we would get the timeline closer to what we would need it to be, and the price would be locked in. But you're absolutely right. Normally, any other year where we didn't have this kind of hardship with the trucks, we would be building the truck right now, specing it, and we'd be submitting it to you guys in the fall for the 2023 budget.
Okay. Are, are there, are there items on the capital budget that we should be looking at to make sure we have the right amount allocated? You know, if you go from $500,000 to $700,000, $700,000, that's a, that's a pretty big jump. And I'm, I'm concerned that this is gonna be an ongoing issue if we're not getting accurate numbers so we can budget it appropriately moving forward.
Yep. Matt, Matt Eazy and I had that conversation, and we're actually gonna start going back through and looking at it. I can already tell you that the price we gave you for a ladder in 2028 is nowhere near where it's gonna be. I believe we said 1.5 million. The price we got last week was 1.9 million. So, and it's, once again, just going up. So we're gonna rework all of our numbers, but I don't think any of us anticipated when we did the capital budget, it would be as drastic as it has been. So you're, you are right, we have some work to do to clean up the numbers, but Matt and I already had that conversation. So we will pursue that.
Great. Thanks, Chief. Chief Archibald.
I just want to add one quick comment here, you know, not trying to sway you guys one way or the other. So with the total 100% upfront payment, it sort of goes without saying there is some risk involved when you just hand over the check to the company, because I don't know this business, but if they go bankrupt or something like that, that's obviously a risk that needs to go into consideration.
Chief, on the other vehicles, did we go with Reliant, or was it Pierce?
So Reliant is the dealership that sells us Pierce. We, we don't buy directly from Pierce. Pierce doesn't sell directly to customers, but it's been Reliant for the engine that's coming, the tender that the town bought as Reliant, and now this truck. But they're all three Pierce as a brand. And Pierce is, I guess I can't speak for them, but I don't think they're gonna go bankrupt tomorrow. They're, they're a pretty massive company. So...
Yeah, when they charge millions of dollars for their vehicles. Maybe.
And one was pretty large when it went out of business, too.
I guess, Matt, there was, when you look at the prepayment options, it's, when I looked at number two, at option two, to, to a certain perspective, right, I was like, that's a lot of money to give, to hand over to Reliant for only about a $7,000 savings. I could, I could put it in a CD and probably make more interest, right? So the question was, is for option one, which for the, the village members of the committee, it, it made a lot of sense to us. But again, I'm just curious if, is the savings enough to warrant a, an upfront payment in April of 2023, knowing we won't, could be another six to 10 months to take delivery even from there? To me, I was trying to look at it from a financial standpoint. Am I better off holding on to my own money in my own account, the village in this case, right? Or are we better off giving it to, to Reliant? Because we, we kind of spun around this a couple of times in the committee.
I would still agree with that. I guess the former, I don't know if we give any money, not at all. There's a risk.
It's about 2%.
So, so there's a question of, how soon can I get it, right? And if, if it takes a full 12 months after that, I can absolutely make more money on, in an interest-bearing account than I can having them sit on it. Which is what, again, knowing that now, I'm leaning towards no prepayment, just C O D.
Yeah. This other option of the town buying it upfront, that's still a, it's a risk too, right? Buying it now.
I was gonna say, it sounds like any way you slice this, we'd probably want to place the order. It's a matter, how do you want to set up the payment? If it's 19 to 20 months, you, you're not even gonna get it in '23. And the fire department squads, that's when we plan on getting it. And the fire department squads, that's when we plan on getting it. So it's a matter of figuring out.
I guess I personally...
Go ahead, Troy.
I'm personally not sure, I'm personally not sure there's enough savings there to do any sort of upfront payment, but this is my feeling.
I have to ask the question, can we haggle on the prepayment?
I don't think they're haggling right now, to be honest with you, so...
I had to ask.
So just to put it in...
Sales guy here had to ask, you know?
I guess to put it in perspective, so what happened was, the example I used was the tender that the town just purchased. They bought a commercial chassis tender, meaning that the main engine, the truck, all the wheels, that's built by Kenworth. What happened was we locked in our price in August, July, whatever that was, September, and the commercial truck industry is really bad right now. So they're staying like three years out on a commercial chassis and all their prices have gone way up. And what every other manufacturer's doing is they're actually issuing change orders back to the customer for the price that's gone up and making them pay for the difference. But Pierce, because they didn't want to do that to their customers, they're eating the loss, which is why their prices are up now because they have to make up for, they're losing a lot of money on the commercial chassis that they're eating the cost on. So it's, they're really not negotiating on prices right now. Because like, we tried to see if we could extend, there was a price increase February that we talked about, and we tried to see, can we like push that out just a little bit? And there was like no budget, even for people that were buying 40 fire trucks. They said midnight, February 1st, this increase is happening. Sorry, you know, so. Sorry.
That's helpful to hear all that perspective. You know, when you think of option two, I mean, the more we talk about it, having 7K is a drop in the bucket when you're talking to 1.9 million dollar fire truck. And savings?
I just, I don't see a prepayment as a... I guess I could have brought my calculator, I did math, but thank you, man. It just doesn't, I just don't see any value in prepayment, you know?
The only value is to lock in the price of the vehicle, however you need to do that.
And just so you want to order lots in the price. So as soon as he calls him and says, we don't order it.
As soon as you sign the contract.
Yes, yeah.
You get what I'm saying, but I mean, it's just, really what we're having over here is the prepayment. I think we all agree, like, we need to change, we need to replace squad one, but it's, the town wants to pay for it upfront. We don't see the value in a prepayment, so it's kind of a standoff.
We're just talking about how we want to finance it.
So if we approve the purchase but not a prepayment and the town approves the purchase with a prepayment, then how does that work?
Well, any decision needs to be unanimous from the committee. So if the town approves with the prepayment and you guys don't, it's up to somebody to change their mind. Otherwise, we go to the next budget year, I guess, or whenever it's brought before either board again.
Or they could prepay and we pay them as planned in '23.
And they'll take the savings?
Yeah, they could.
Yeah. I guess we planned on '23 as the budget item, so that, for me, number one, then makes sense.
I guess I'll make a motion that we order the truck and not prepay.
Second. All right, we have a motion second, then. Any further discussion? Having heard, then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Motion carries. Thanks, chief.
Thank you, thanks a lot, guys.
Appreciate it.
Did you want to go over your memo, too? You had a couple more things than David did.
Sure.
Well, I just had some questions from it, I guess, if that's okay.
Yeah.
If I can read my notes. So on the memos going forward, I was wondering if you could list the equipment that we have so we could get used to the abbreviations, like L1 and all those different things and kind of like a little description, because that would help me going forward. And I guess, I guess that's all I have. I thought I had a lot more notes on there, I'm sorry, but I do appreciate the memo and the information on the trainings and the updates on the radios and installation and all that. So that was all I had.
All right. And put a plug in for Saturday for us?
Yeah, our corned beef and cabbage is Saturday. I think it's 11 till we sell out, 11 to 1:00. Usually we sell out before 1:00, so come early.
Yep. Thanks, chief. Thanks a lot, Anna.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right. Moving then to unfinished business. First one is discuss and consider ordinance 02-2022, amending chapter 12, boards committees and commissions. There's a memo in the packets. And any questions on that? We've already had kind of a conversation on this, but just want to check with everybody.
Yeah, I can just say, I can just say a couple of words. So this is an ordinance that we discussed a month ago, where it's just trying to clean up some of the committees in the village. One thing as we were going through this is even your ordinances aren't consistent in their terminology of how these committees are treated. So there might be some in the future that we have to clean up as well, just because for some reason the committee names just aren't consistent throughout the ordinances. So even if I try to search your ordinances, they don't all show up. So as we find them, we'll try to clean those up, too. But otherwise, the ordinance change is consistent with what you guys discussed. I'd sent a quick revision to Lisa earlier today, I don't know if you guys got that, but just one of them had to change the name of Personnel Committee, had changed that to Budget Review Committee. So that's another one where it didn't show up as Finance and Personnel, so.
Any questions or comments from board members on this?
I will make a motion to approve ordinance 02-2022, amending chapter 12 of the boards committees and commissions.
Second.
All right, thanks, Musa, thanks, Paul. Any further discussion?
Just said we'll have, if you cover it, we'll have a public hearing.
Oh, yeah, sorry. So one thing is, one of the committee names comes up in chapter 274, which is your subdivision of land ordinance. So as the memo explains, to do any amendment to your subdivision ordinance, we need to have a public hearing. So we've got a public hearing scheduled before the board in two weeks on those changes.
Even though it is adding sustainability.
Yeah, we're just changing the name of a committee, so it's not being substantive. But unfortunately, the law says we have to do that.
State law?
Yes.
Okay.
So then, this would not then be in place until after that public hearing?
So yes, this ordinance would be in place. The 274, chapter 274 changes, they need to go to Plan Commission and the Village Board, but we can have the public hearing before the Village Board, not Plan Commission. So the chapter 274 changes, which is like two committee modifications, those would go into effect in two weeks.
Clear as mud?
Just wondering when we need to, when I need to add the committee members for like public works and sustainability.
So this would be, yeah, so you could start adding those right away after this is published.
Yeah, okay. That's where I was going with that.
Yes.
All right. Any other discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor, then?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Motion carries. You gotta just remember that Troy's just slightly delayed on the feedback. Next up, then, we have new business, discuss and consider release of Phase C Corey Ridge Estates consisting of lots 56 through 64 and 67 through 73 and 76 through 81.
So this is a, I think we did a Phase B amendment a few months ago, so this is almost identical agreement. We sent them basically the same thing and they didn't provide us any changes. So the only thing we added was about a road that we're dealing with a pipeline issue, just saying that they're still responsible for building this road once we get this pipeline issue figured out. So otherwise, it's almost identical to the last one that was approved a few months ago.
A motion to approve release of Phase C of Corey Ridge Estates consisting of lots 56 through 64, 67 through 73, and 76 through 81.
Second.
Thanks, Paul. Thanks, Musa, and thanks, Troy. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor, then?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Motion carries. Next, under new business, then we have discuss and consider a second amendment to the agreement of fifth edition West Lawn Estates.
So similar to the last item, this is just a simple amendment agreement. It releases lots for development within West Lawn. Fairly straightforward, just like the last one.
Rick, please?
I guess I'm both, the last one and this one. Is there, is there a way maybe in the future we do this? Can we get like a plat and understand which lots?
Yeah, we can, we can definitely.
I'm just, as a future, it's a good idea.
Yeah.
Because I had to Google Corey Ridge.
I'm a visual person, too, so it's nice to help the...
I'm just trying to understand, because we've had a lot of questions, specifically, Heidi and I have had questions around West Lawn Estates. And I know there's, I could always reach out to Andrew, but just trying to understand kind of where this is. We can get the lots highlighted on the plat now, the big super.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
I'll make a motion to approve the second amendment to the agreement for the fifth edition of West Lawn Estates.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, thanks, Paul. Thanks, David. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor, then?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Motion carries. Next, we have reports from village boards and commissions and committees, starting with Deer Grove EMS. That's Sarah Troy. Sarah's enjoying some time away, so Troy, you're up. Bless you.
As we discussed this at the February 17 meeting, basically transferring funds for the capital purchase of the new ambulance, it was passed by the Deer Grove EMS Commission. And am I missing anything, I missed, chief? About dollar amounts in the memo, dollar amounts on the actual resolution.
Correct, yeah. Basically, what it was is because the chassis didn't come in, we at first thought that we could just let the money go to fund balance and then pull from it as it arrived, but through our annual audit process, they advised us that we needed to make the money as allocated to a specific use. So that's why this comes up now as opposed to when we were gonna actually spend it. Rumor has it that our chassis is on a train, hopefully gonna come this direction. So yeah, that's what the resolution is all about.
Any questions for chief on this? Otherwise, this is discuss and consider.
I'll move to approve resolution 2022-02-17, ambulance capital purchase fund transfer.
Second.
All right, thanks, Musa. Thanks, David. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor, then?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Motion carries. Troy, anything else to highlight or chief on the meeting?
We actually already talked about it at the last meeting, John.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, I could have swore that we did an overview of the meeting already, but my mind fails me at times and it is dark outside and it snowed today, so there's a lot of factors involved in that. I would add quickly that as far as ARPAs and radios go, we're in the same boat as the fire department and have a memo prepared to bring forward to you or to present to you in regard to AFG if we don't get it in radio replacements. So we'll bring that forward in the future.
Will that come through the commission first then, chief, and then to the village board, correct?
It's already come through the commission once already, Troy.
Oh, that's right. I've got choo-choo train in my mind now.
Yes. Yeah, we're gonna have an international ambulance that'll start in Mexico, go through America, and then get to Canada eventually.
And then to the village of Deerfield and Cottage Grove, the town as well. Awesome.
Yes, sir.
All right, then. Thanks, chief. Thanks, Troy. We'll move then to...
President Williams, I'll drop this off at the village hall for you to sign.
Yes, thank you. Next up, then, we have Law Enforcement Committee. I'll take a stab at this and let Troy or chief jump in. We met on February 22nd, talked a little bit, chief talked a little bit about some issues that have been occurring in a couple of the apartment complexes. They're working with the properties management team and there's just, as of now, a good partnership and they're sorting, they've been sorting out these issues. That's what happens when you get a bunch of people really close together. Chief also updated us on the plate readers coming into town, again, the pilots extending, they're still having some of them have issues. They had, like everything else, the equipment, they wanted to winterize it, they couldn't winterize the readers, so thus the cold spells have impacted them. Despite that, though, we've, they have shown success. Chief gave an example recently of a stolen car that was, came into the village, officer was notified, tracked the car down, not only did we return the car to their rightful owner, but also unfortunately for the person in it, found that they had narcotics on them and were arrested. Next, let's see, chief noted just the SRO report. Again, the SRO continues to be involved in our schools in Cottage Grove and continues to get support for that and seems to be involved in a lot of different things if you get a chance to read through the report. Really, the only other thing covered is just the series of annual reports that are coming up at our next meeting, use of force, internal affairs, and just chief's annual report, which I believe is done now, so we'll talk about that at our next meeting. I think the only thing, other items there, we had another successful trade in your food products, your food items for your ticket, your parking tickets this year over the holidays. There were four loads of food, four loads taking over the food, local food pantry again this year and again, it's shown success. So people have embraced it, which is really nice to see. Chief, anything I missed, if you're on, or Troy?
Yep, I'm on. We can discuss the annual reports tonight if you want, John, or we can go over at the LEC first and then come to the village board. I think it says discuss annual report.
Yes, it does. So it is on the agenda, so yeah, please, if you want to.
Okay, great. So I'll go over the use of force. We only had one documented use of force last year and that, that one was, again, one of these of resisting arrest where we have to put hands on to get the person into custody. Our use of force, when we have to document it and do an investigation on it, involves pretty much any time you put hands on someone or you pull a gun out. The federal use of force guidelines are serious injury or death or shooting at someone. So we, we document pretty much everything that's when we go hands on with someone. So not sure why we only had one last year, but I'm very happy that it turned out that we didn't injure the person. He injured himself before we got there, but that was a pretty good year for use of force, knock on wood. As far as internals, then, we had no internal investigations. As far as internals, then we, we had no internal investigations of officers last year. We had at least one formal citizen complaint, but they didn't cooperate in the investigation. So it's kind of hard to do an investigation, but we did look into it and the officer, for the second year in a row with this person, did the right thing, was respectful and took their complaint. So that was unfounded. We did have, we do get people that call in and want to complain about things or send us an email and, and we will contact them and talk to them and explain the situation. And if they want a formal investigation, we will go that route. But as is usually the case, once you explain why we did something, it usually ends up making the person understand and they're, they decline the formal investigation and that procedure. Any questions on that part? And then we, so that's use of force and then citizen complaints, internals. Goals for twenty-twenty-one, our first one was to maintain accreditation, which we did. We had our onsite at the three-year mark and we passed that again, so we're good for another three years. You know, we're one of only forty-two agencies in the state that are accredited, so that's something we're proud of and it definitely helps us function as a professional law enforcement agency. Another goal was to identify equipment and facility and tech needs and as part of that, we participated in the facility study and right now, we're good to go as, as far as space, but if we start adding a lot more officers, at some point, we would need to expand. And that was discussed with the company that did the needs study. We also have the license plate readers, which we talked about earlier. Those are still on a trial basis, but we do have money set aside and capital if we want to go that route. They, they are a big help to us and when they're working, they're a pretty good tool for law enforcement. One thing that has helped us, it's not the license plate readers, but QuickTrip has stopped with the taking payment indoors, so you have to pay with a credit card at the pump. And so that's dramatically cut down people doing gas drive-offs. So that, I think they basically get sick of getting ripped off by people and, and now you have to have a credit card before you can start pumping gas, so that was a big help for us. That's, those calls have gone down dramatically. We, we went with FirstNet instead of US Cellular for our squads now, so we went from hotspots to cradle points and that's really enhanced our ability to communicate. Our wellness program was another goal that we wanted to increase participation in that and our participation is up. And we did work towards improving our domestic violence response. We have a new checklist that we got from the sheriff's department that we're putting into use. We received training from the sheriff's department on that and we're, we're pretty happy with that new initiative and, and procedures are now in place to get us involved more after the fact so that we don't have recidivism. Any questions on goals and objectives for twenty-twenty-one?
Chief, if you could just explain a little bit more about the, the sheriff's office domestic violence program or initiative or what, what do they call it? That you sent an email to me about? I found that really fascinating on how it will help to decrease domestic disturbances?
Yes, so they have dedicated deputies or detectives that follow up on the domestics that the sheriff's department responds to and those, those deputies or detectives have those checklists I talked about. So they work with the victims to help put in place plans to reduce the recidivism. They also give the resources to these people so they know where they can go to if they so choose to avail themselves of the resources and hopefully get them out of these repeat situations. Matt, do you have, I know you grabbed the checklist and put it into place for us. Are there things on there that are somewhat different than what we've been doing?
Yeah, I mean, a lot of it just comes into the post-incident investigation when it comes to dealing with, you know, these sensitive type of crimes of, you know, in the heat of the moment or the, the heat of the incident and there's not a lot of information that's very forthcoming just because of the high emotion and the adrenaline. So, you know, it's been found doing these follow-up investigations. Once cooler heads have prevailed, we can get more detailed information and we can take more photographs of injuries because injuries have, you know, taken place or there, the bruising has increased, so we can show the DA's office the better types of injuries that these individuals are, you know, sustaining during these types of incidents. You know, with the seventy-two hour no contact, it gives us three days to kind of really just get the individuals and the victims all involved in this case, the appropriate resources that they need. But then again, just gives them a point of contact with the police department to, you know, for any future reference or any future needs that they would have that we could be able to help them through and advocate for them as, as victims of domestic violence.
Thank you.
Quick question, Chief. On goal number three, when it comes to the physical fitness and wellness program, you say right now you have at least fifty percent participation. What, I guess, what are you putting in place for this year to get as close to a hundred percent as you can?
Yeah, I, I am well aware there are certain people in the police department that will not participate in this and there's no way you're ever going to get them to participate, but we, we keep on offering and we, we have a great equipment room for pretty much anything you want to do for cardio or lifting weights or stretching. It's all available back there and so we just keep on reminding people and it's, it's, I don't know what we can do to make someone do it, but I, I keep on trying to get them to take advantage of it because it's free and it's, it's something that's only going to help them. So I don't know other than we keep on emphasizing the benefits of it and they can see the benefits that it's done for other people in the agency and maybe that will encourage them to get involved themselves.
Thank you.
So anything else on goals and objectives for twenty-twenty-one and how we achieve them? Otherwise, then I'll, the annual report is the, the large document in there and again, we came in as the seventh safest city in the state of Wisconsin this year. We're, we're usually in the top twenty. I think last year we were sixteenth, this year we're seventh. And the way that is ranked is any village or city or town above four thousand population would fit the criteria. And they use the data reported by law enforcement agencies to the federal, the state and federal government to come up with these rankings. And I think a lot of what our success is tied to is obviously we, the citizens we have living here are pretty good people and they're pretty happy with going along with the plan and, and most of the times when we have crimes, it's, it's not necessarily the people that live here, it's people that are, you know, coming through town and, and committing their crimes and then the next night or that same night they'll hit Sun Prairie or they'll hit McFarland. But generally, the people that are committing the crimes here aren't usually the people that live here, so I guess that's a good thing. And that's part of the reason we want those license plate readers up at some of the entrances to the village because generally, the people that are committing the property crimes, the stolen vehicles, the burglaries, they're driving stolen vehicles. So if we can get notified when they're coming into town, then we can go out and look for them and we know the vehicle and the plate and usually we can find them if, if we look long enough. So for the budget for twenty-twenty-one, we came in under budget and we updated our use of force policy. I know that the whole George Floyd thing was a wake-up call for, for a lot of law enforcement agencies and a lot of communities across the US. And our use of force policy was always online on the village website. I would like to say our use of force policy was pretty, pretty up to date because we're an accredited agency and we always go with their recommendations, but we did enhance the portion of the use of force that is a mandatory intervention requirements for police officers. So if you see someone, an officer that may be using excessive force, you can't, you can't just stand there and watch it and report it later. You have to actually intervene, which I think is a good idea, obviously. And I'll go through this, but if anybody has questions as we're going along, please feel free. We had about ten thousand calls for service last year and some of those calls for service are self-initiated, some are obviously people calling us and looking for help. And about eight hundred and twenty-four calls for service per month. In the annual report, we have our pictures of the officers, descriptions of their training and their duties. We did add three officers and we had one retire and we added three officers in early January this year. I'll document that in next year's annual report, but those, two of those officers are going through field training right now at the police department and the third one is at the academy in Madison and he will be done with the academy in May and then he has to go through three months of field training. So pretty extensive process to get officers trained and out on the street and sometimes you even have to extend field training to make sure that people are getting it and doing, and following the field training manual, which is very extensive. Lars retired at the, just recently, our K-nine. He had back issues and a lot of slipped discs, so we don't know if it was attributed to his work at the police department or just the typical German Shepherd issues once you're getting up to nine, ten years of age. So he's been retired and we will then, this year, get ourselves another K-nine and another K-nine handler and, and continue with the program, which is pretty well-received in the community and, and I think has been a big help to us.
Hey, Chief.
Yes?
Did Lars participate in our wellness program and physical fitness?
Unfortunately, he was one of the officers that did not avail himself of our program, so that could be the reason he's out, he's retired at least. Yeah, he was, he was, he's still in great shape, but, but he's just not really qualified anymore to be able to jump in and out of police cars and, you know, jumping over fences and stuff like that. It's just a lot to ask of a dog that's got back issues.
Yeah. Thanks.
You bet. Violent crime rate for Wisconsin is about three point two per one thousand residents. National average is three point six-six per one thousand residents and the village is at zero point one four per one thousand residents. So we do pretty well on violent crime year in and year out and our property crime rate is, is, the national average is nineteen point five per one thousand residents. In Cottage Grove, our rate is, is about nine point four per one thousand residents. So we're doing pretty good in, in those types of crimes and that's why we rank so high in the state when it comes to overall numbers. Burglary, that's just looking through some of the crimes we had here, you know, as far as crimes against persons, we had a couple of intimidations, a couple, you know, six simple assaults, but when it comes to, you know, the real violent crimes, I, we only had one aggravated assault. So people have been doing pretty good during the pandemic. I, I, along with a lot of other people, had concerns that the pandemic was going to drive people nuts and they're going to be beating each other up, but it's actually turned out it, it hasn't worked that, that, like that, thank God. Burglary, we had nine of them last year. Theft, larceny, we had about thirty-eight of those, so. And again, it's hard to solve some of these non-violent property crimes because they are people that are transient in nature and, and once you finally do catch up with them, there's charges from literally seven or eight agencies that are pending against them at the DA's office because we identify them via a video and then you just have to wait for them to get caught. And sometimes it's hard to catch them because they will flee in a car and have no regard for safety of others. So oftentimes, we will not pursue if it's endangering the public. We will pursue if it has to do with a violent crime, but not a property crime. So I'm just looking at our, our statistics year to year and crimes against persons, we had nine of them in twenty-twenty-one, twenty-one the year before, twenty-four before that, and sixteen, so crimes against persons, it's gone down from last year and crimes, property crimes went up. And I think that had to do a lot of these, these organized groups that were committing car thefts, committing thefts from vehicles and, and daytime and nighttime burglaries. Unfortunately, a lot of people leave their houses unlocked and leave their cars unlocked and leave things in cars, like guns and money and credit cards, and they get stolen. So not much we can do other than, you know, make sure people are aware of that there's people out there that will rip you off and you have to be vigilant twenty-four-seven. Any questions on the annual report? I'll look through here and see if there's anything else. Steve? Oh, one thing, as far as tickets, we, a lot of people have misconceptions about police and, and tickets and how many they write and how come I never get a warning? Well, we issue double the amount of warnings than tickets. So our, our goal is frankly to educate the public and so they won't be doing it again. So we had about sixteen hundred warnings last year and about eight hundred tickets written, so. We, it's, it's usually that way year in and year out. We don't emphasize that every traffic stop has to result in a ticket. And if someone's not doing something egregious, it's the officer's discretion on whether or not to write a ticket. And like I said, domestic abuse was down in twenty-twenty-one. Medical assistance, so we get dispatched to all medical calls in the village and sometimes we get there before other emergency services and sometimes afterwards, but our calls for, for assistance were four hundred and eighty-six last year and that was up from the three, upper three hundred the year before, so a lot more medical assistance calls going on. Other than that, any questions on the annual report?
I just had a few things. I just wanted to thank you for your service and our police department officers for their service to our community and partnering with our residents to help keep us all safe. And I think you stated that we were seventh in the state, but with the new updated report you had sent, we're first in Dane County as being the safest municipality, which I think is a, a great testament to, to your service and our police officers. So I really appreciate that and I, I think that's an awesome stat, so thank you. I also wanted to just. I also wanted to, uh, just, I, I had a question as to, for the number of calls in our department went down compared to 2020, and why do you think that is? I guess if you have any idea.
Total calls for service went down. You know, a lot of our calls are self-initiated, and, um, it could have been that we were short on personnel and, and people were just responding to calls that were more proactive in nature or reactive in nature. So if an officer has time, they'll do building checks at night, or, you know, or they'll make traffic stops, but if they don't have a lot of time, then those things kind of go out the window. And I, I would assume COVID, well, in fact, I know COVID has had an effect on some of our more proactive interactions with the citizens. So it could have been those, those factors, or not real sure.
Okay, no, that makes sense. And then I just wanted to, um, point out some of your proactive programming, like the special needs awareness program where you encourage parents and caretakers of special needs children and adults to participate in the program, um, to help keep them safe with your officers. Uh, if anything happens, I really appreciate that program. Uh, in addition, being one of the few remaining police departments to open a vehicle with the keys locked inside, that's a great service. I fortunately have not had to take, uh, that, um, service, not had to use that, but I, I've had to years ago, not here, but thank you for that. And the Cottage Grove Coalition Cares, which is, uh, made up of law enforcement, community members, educators, parents, drug treatment and awareness groups, and other volunteers uh, and t, interested in teaching drug and alcohol abuse prevention to our community, especially our school-aged children and young adults. And with that, you do the Drug Take Back Days twice per year with Board Pharmacy, um, and present seminars to educate the public. I appreciate all of that for our community because education really is key and helpful in keeping us all safe. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks for highlighting those.
Any other questions for Chief, unless Chief, you have anything else you need to cover?
I think I'll pile on to Melissa's, uh, thanks. Thank you, Chief, for what you do. You know, when I first came to the board, it was very apparent that, you know, there's this, we needed a lot more staff in the village, and you guys managed to do a lot with, with a little, so I do want to appreciate that and point that out. So thank you.
Yeah, I also, I, we did have two officers go through the leadership and police organizations. Uh, one of them was subsequently promoted to sergeant, so those, those courses are, oftentimes, the, uh, you directly get promoted as a result of going to these, and it kind of puts you at the forefront of your agency when you're looking for promotion. So we had a couple officers volunteer and went through that course, and, uh, like I said, one of them's now sergeant, so it, it helps us and it helps them.
All right. If there's nothing else for Chief, then we can move on. Thanks, Chief. Then we move over to the Ad-Hoc Housing Task Force. David Paul, who want to walk us through?
Yep, I can take that, John. Uh, our meeting was last Wednesday, March 2nd, uh, and just prior to that, we actually had a few small group, uh, working sessions to really look at a process around community engagement and, uh, public input around housing. From that, uh, we developed a fact sheet, um, which is inclusive to mission statement and some objectives, comprehensive plan, um, and then some comparables, uh, facts as relates, comparables, uh, from other communities to the Village of Cottage Grove, 2019 Dane County assessment, and then some additional facts. We also developed a, a survey for the community with four, uh, key topics, see, around senior residents, climate change, household composition changes, and affordability. The purpose of our last meeting, Aaron had presented, um, a timeline as it relates to offering two open houses, um, to share information, to receive feedback, and the recommendation is to provide, um, one during the week and then one on the weekend. Aaron or David, anything that I missed?
John, you good?
Um, I can just add, we've scheduled the dates for those open houses. It'll be Thursday, April 21st, from 6:00 to 8:00, and then again on Saturday, April 23rd, from 10:00 a.m. to noon. Uh, both of those will be at Village Hall, and all of you are welcome.
All right, anything else?
I just wanted to note that the fact sheet is terrific information about our village, um, and so everybody should check that out. I posted it on my Facebook page, and I got some really good comments about it, so I'm really excited for the work of the task force.
Thanks, Melissa. Next up, then we have Parks, Rec, and Forestry Committee. Heidi.
Hi, thanks. Uh, we met last week on Thursday, and we have a couple exciting things we're planning for improvements this year that were in the budget. Uh, the first is the Bakken Park Skate Park and Pump Track. If Sean's on and wants to share it on his screen, I think it's really awesome. Otherwise, if you have a chance to take a look at the renderings in the packet, uh, the Parks Packet, I think you'll be really impressed with, um, you know, what we can get built there. It's scheduled to, um, kind of coincide with the Clark and Grove improvements, and, uh, so after the festival is kind of when things are really gonna ramp up in construction, um, built in with the topography that's already there, so, um, I think it's gonna be a really great asset for the park. Um, we also, thanks, Sean. We also talked about the community park redevelopment plans, which we discussed a few meetings ago, and kind of getting all the details together with, uh, the pickleball courts and such. And then we had a couple changes that we're talking about at the Red Hawk Park. Phase two is going to be an inline skate, and the new consultants we have through Strand recommended, um, kind of rethinking what we were going to build there, um, because it doesn't quite fit in the space, be a little too small, and it might draw a big crowd, so we don't really have parking to accommodate people, um, coming to inline skate at that park. So we might rethink the location and then substitute in some other equipment and improvements in that park instead, so we're working on that. Sean's doing interviews for the program coordinator position. We meet in a couple weeks. Sean, did you have anything else to add?
Uh, nope. Well, just that Aaron and I are, we're starting to work on the update for the Parks Open Space Plan. I don't know if you, maybe you said it, I missed it.
Nope, I missed that one. Thank you. Yep, the five-year Parks and Open Space Plan, uh, which we have to have updated every five years to qualify for certain grants. So, um, we're taking kind of chunk by chunk, working on, uh, updating that with the committee and Sean and Aaron. Does that sound good? Got it all?
Got it.
All right. Any questions?
Sean, on the, uh, on the pump track, this is just out of personal curiosity, how big are the rollers for the, for the bike section?
Uh, I don't know that yet. We haven't gotten down to exact specifics. Um, that's the overall rending, rendering of it, but I'm not aware of that. I can find out.
Okay.
Davis getting his bike ready.
It's already ready.
Okay, there you go.
Ready to go. So I guess, Sean, that, when you say it's rendering, is, is this not what, what are, is this, it will look like this when it's done? We just don't know the height, or is this what it could look like?
That's correct. That's, that's what the plan is gonna look like when it's done. It still needs to do the bid documents and all those things, so I haven't seen any of the final, um, the final statistics on it to this point, but yes, that is the plan.
Okay, and I'll be able to take the bike path all the way to the pump track?
You mean, yes, absolutely.
Awesome. Thank you.
Regarding Red Hawk, is, was the, was the inline skating planned for this year? I can't remember.
Yes, it was.
Okay, so we're gonna, are, we gonna be able to figure out the item that goes in there this year, or is that gonna get pushed back to next year now because we gotta kind of sort that through?
No, we're, we're already working on plans for that, and we hope to have something to show our committee on the 24th, and then we'll bring it to the board for the board, board approval on the change of the, of the overall plan.
Okay, super. Just curious, thank you. Anything else on Parks? All right, thanks, Heidi, thanks, Sean. Moving then to reports from village officers. Rick, you're up.
Just a couple of quick election notes. So a couple weeks ago, spoke with Lisa, uh, so we, there was a circuit court decision regarding drop boxes. So in speaking with Lisa, we decided that we're just gonna close the, the drop box, and, uh, so that's just no longer an option to return absentee ballots, uh, until we hear otherwise from the Supreme Court.
Can I do my water bills through that, or like, you, like the drop box is out?
Uh, we, I'm not sure if Lisa has locked it yet, but that's what we decided is we're just gonna do whatever we can to make sure people aren't dropping off their ballots there because they could be invalidated if they're dropped off from a box.
Yes.
It will help with it. Go ahead, Lisa.
So the plan is for the drop box is, once, um, absentee ballots will be mailed, um, we are going to seal off the drop box. It will be noted that it is, and that if they have a utility payment, they certainly can come in the building during office hours, or if it's after office hours, there is a drop box at Municipal Services Building. But it is to kind of, um, get ahead of anybody accidentally bringing in a ballot and it being disqualified, and then we cannot contact them. So that is the plan at this moment. Um, ballots are going to be delivered, uh, this week, Thursday, so we're hoping to have them out by Friday.
The good news on the utility bill front is technically there's, we prefer that they go to the other building, the Municipal Services Building, that's where the utilities are, are located, so, um, it's perfectly fine if they come here normally, but that might help retrain or, uh, train people to bring that to the other, the other building.
Retrain board members like myself, who's done it here forever?
It's perfectly, it's perfectly.
You said it so nicely, Matt.
It's really fine to bring it here, but.
Is there a sign to note that, then?
Um, we, we could create one, it just hasn't been. Go ahead, Lisa.
Oh, okay, your, your sound dropped off online. We couldn't hear you for a moment. But I think you back up.
I, I stopped talking. We, we interrupted each other, so.
Okay.
So is there a sign?
I don't know, she knows what she's.
Oh, I think the question was, um, is there a sign?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear if somebody had a question because the, the mic's cut out at the Village Hall.
Hi, can you hear me now?
I can.
Okay, I was just wondering, is there a sign at Village Hall then telling people to take their utility payment to the municipal building?
There will be, once we, um, lock the, secure the box, there will be instructions on what they can do with their payment or, um, anything else that they would have to drop off, where to go if it's a utility payment, and if they need to come into Village Hall, what our hours are, et cetera. And we plan on putting that out on a news flash on the website and a Facebook post.
Great. One last thing, just, did you say that absentee ballots will be mailed out this Friday?
Correct. We will receive them on Thursday, so we're hoping to get them out in the mail on Friday.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I just had a follow-up on that with the absentee ballots, so, um, the way that people should return those now is either mail them back or bring them here in person, or is the mail?
Yes, those are the only two methods. You can either mail them back. Also, you should deliver them, your own absentee ballot, you shouldn't be delivering somebody else's.
Yep, I was just gonna reiterate that, that is, um, clear in our instructions for the voters, that if it's a husband-wife or you're sending your kids out on errands, that it has to be the voter that returns the ballot. So that has changed with the drop box kind of situation, so that's another FYI, and we will be, um, putting that information out in news flash and Facebook posts so that it's clear.
So, I'm just curious here. So like, if I hold on to my wife's ballot, but she's standing next to me, is that, is that legal or not?
The law says you personally deliver your ballot to the clerk or like the clerk's designee, so basically, as long as the person is personally there to deliver it, that's what matters.
You have to do it together, David.
Or separately, with your own.
Together.
I will find a way.
Hey, Lisa, or John, I guess, can we have this on, um, our next agenda since it'll be, uh, the Monday right after the absentee ballots go out, just like as an update in our agenda so that informational-wise?
Yep.
Thank you.
Sure, because I can, um, go over, um, the typey notices on the, the website, but then I can also go over the absentee, in-person absentee hours, um, which will be our normal, um, office hours, and then we have two Wednesdays, um, prior that will be until 5:30, and then, um, April 2nd, I plan on being at Village Hall from 10:00 to noon. But we'll, we can do that on the next agenda too and put it out there so people are where I can type up a memo, so it's out there.
Thank you.
And, and Rick, you said this was at the appeals court, or?
It's before the Supreme Court right now, the Wisconsin Supreme.
Yep.
So basically, one party challenged the absentee guidance that the Elections Commission issued. Circuit Court struck it down, and then, um, the Elections Commission rescinded all of its guidance on, um, drop boxes.
When do we expect a, a ruling?
Not anytime soon.
Yeah, good luck.
I don't know, I, I had kept up on it, but I, I didn't know that it had gotten to the Wisconsin State.
Yeah, it bypassed the Court of Appeals and went straight.
That I missed, okay. And then have they, have they had hearings yet?
No. There's briefing going on right now.
Thank you.
And then the other, um, election note is, probably all heard about the new districts being ordered last week. So I sent the maps to Lisa. The maps that were imposed split the village up a little bit, so assuming they survive challenges, the, um, village is gonna have to redraw its wards. So that could be something we'll see, depending on how the appeals go.
And that one, they're now appealing that to the U.
As of today, it was appealed to the U.S. Supreme Court, and that's where the challenges are right now. So they asked for the Wisconsin Supreme Court to stay to their decision, and they asked for the Supreme Court to stay to their decision. Under both motions, they asked for different maps to be imposed, but, so, U.S. Supreme Court, who knows when they'll issue a decision on that. The Wisconsin Supreme Court, maybe we'll get something this week, but it's basically just gonna let us know whether or not we're using the maps that the court ordered or we're using some other maps.
But that's not for this election?
It won't affect the April election.
Yeah.
It's more looking to the, the fall election and how electors or candidates would go about doing their nomination papers.
Anything else, Rick?
That's all I got for you.
No. And that's voting 101 here in Wisconsin.
I'm involved in all of it, so.
I believe you are. All right, with that, then we'll move to Communication and Slade's Business, consider our vouchers. Any questions, comments on vouchers as presented?
I have a question. Uh, Matt, I noticed that, uh, there's March payments to Computer Magic as well as Johnson Block. Can you comment on those? The question was, can we what?
I, I noticed there's, there's, yeah, we paid Computer Magic and we paid Johnson Block.
Yeah, that's just due to the transition kind of both, um, Johnson Block will be 100% starting, um, end of March. It's like the, we had to give a 30-day notice to Computer Magic, and then there was, um, both of them working together. of them working together to. Okay. Get to an end date, but that's the, do you have the exact date? JJ?
I think it's March 23rd. Yep.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to double check. Thanks.
Are we going to have to do email authentication again process?
Yes. Yes. And there's going to be a new domain ending for our emails, so it won't be quite as long. It won't be village.cottage-grove.wi.us.world, so.
Try adding a Vanderbelde in there.
Did they, did they tell you the new domain name?
We requested it.
We were, yeah, Lisa, Lisa, do you know it off the top of your head?
Um.
It's still rather long, but it's not as bad.
Yeah, it's not quite as long. I believe it's going to be cottagegrove. Oh, David, you put me on the spot. I'll have to pull it up. I'll email it to you.
Dot gov?
Dot gov, yeah. It's more.
Yeah. It's, it's, it's shorter, but it's not real little short. We couldn't do CG or VO CG or something like that. We had to spell it out.
Yeah.
Okay.
And surprisingly, the federal government at that level actually gets back to you pretty quickly.
And they're starting some cyber threat training that everyone will need to go through, including board members, so. It's all good information.
A motion to approve the vouchers as they were presented.
Second.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you, David.
Oh, that's what we're on.
That's where we're at. Thanks for bringing us back. It's been motion second. Is there any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Name of the stain, motion carries, correspondence? I didn't have anything. I don't know if anybody had. Been a little quieter since the last round of them. All right, then we'll move on to upcoming community events. Fire chief and lieutenant already gave us their plug for their corned beef and cabbage coming up this weekend on Saturday at the fire station. Any others that folks can think of?
Optimists have their Easter egg hunt, uh, April, I think it's April 8th. I don't know, but it's in April.
All right. You have another month to put the plug in again.
Yes, that's right.
You can preorder your rain barrel on our website. Get ready for spring, melt that snow.
Any, do we have the update on the compost bins? We're going to get that information from the vendor.
We don't have the final pricing from the vendor yet, so going to touch base with them this week and see if we can get that, get that final pricing so we can get information out to public on that ahead of the April 23rd Earth Day event. It's kind of a big promotion around both of those.
Yep. Any others? I know the Parkinson runs coming up too in April at some point too as well, I believe. I'll have to find that out so I can put that plug in next, next time. Yeah, all right, we're starting to.
April 9.
Excuse me?
Parkinson's is April 9.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate that. I knew what was coming up. And you would know because you get pulled into that, I'm sure, for your, for staff.
Yeah, it kicks off the special event season for us, so we're all locked in for it.
All right. And hopefully they don't, you need your services whatsoever. Unless, just minor things.
Oh, and I just wanted to say that the Lions Club spaghetti dinner went over really well too on Saturday. I know that's not a future one. I just wanted to put a plug in there.
They ran out of meatballs, so it's a good thing. With that, then, future agenda items? Matt, anything that we got? And we have ARC this week. I don't know if that's going to pop back through here, Plan Commission.
Plan Commission, there's a site plan amendment for the J E K, J E K CRE multi-tenant building, more commonly known as the Dunkin', where Dunkin' Donuts is going. And actually ironically, it was Dunkin' Donuts and Baskin Robbins that needed some amendments to the building elevation. So looks really good, just needs to come back for amendment. But that's going to Plan Commission, A R C, and then to the board next time.
Yep. All right. Anything else?
No.
All right, well, Lisa, we'll have, we'll have the update on the voting too. All right, with that, then, I would like to move, the Village Board, Cottage Grove Board will go into closed session to establish negotiation position regarding Deer Grove EMS District and the joint fire agreements. The Village, Cottage Grove Village Board will enter this closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85, Part 1, Part E, deliberating or noviciating purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds or the conducting of other public business where, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Is there a second?
I mean, Troy.
Oh, thank you, Troy. Didn't hear that. Maybe I got my ears checked. All right. Then we'll do a roll call. Lisa, please.
Sure. Alan?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Redcliffe?
Aye.
Valencia? Vanderbelde?
Aye.
And Williams?
Aye. We are in closed session.